All right, thank you, Brian. All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. So we'll jump right into the agenda. The first two items, actually, item one and two, are going to be continued for our next selectmen meeting from March ninth, two thousand twenty-one. With that being said, maybe we'll take just line item by line them. Do I have a, do I have a motion to postpone for March ninth, two thousand twenty-one?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Do I have a motion? And I have a second. Because this is a virtual meeting, per the governor, we need to do a roll call vote for yeas and nays. So Mr. Brian Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. And for that motion, they will do seven o'clock on March ninth, two thousand twenty-one. All right, with that being said, do I have a motion for the second line item?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, motion to, motion to postpone to March nine, seven-ten P.M.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, by Mr. Brian Dick. Roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Okay, so we have a little bit of time here to take care of business. We have a seven-twenty scheduled item for National Grid Poll Petition for Fisk Street. So why don't we do this? Because I know there's a little bit of delay. So why don't we take residents? If residents come in, Brian, just let us know, because I know there's a lag. In the meantime, why don't we jump to, maybe we'll take care of a little bit of a new business. So the first order of new business is the annual town election warrant. Mr. Montori?
Now, this is just a standard election warrant the board approves, and then we'll need to sign, a committed sign for the upcoming annual town election for it to be posted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Montori. Is there a date applied, or we just simply have to approve the warrant, correct?
I just approve the warrant as presented, yep, for annual town election.
Thank you very much. With that said, do I, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual town warrant, election warrant as presented tonight.
Very good. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. All right, let's just keep on going down the list. Any residents, Brian?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep the residents' line open as always. So why don't we move to new business, Tuxbury Diversity, Equality, and Inclusion Advisory Committee. Ms. Wellman, I know you've been staring, staring this. So why don't I give you the floor? Maybe recap with the residents where we're at, kind of like the progression of how we got here, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Okay. So we have, let's see here, proposed back in August, Tuxbury Human Rights Advisory Committee. We have changed the language. So now it's the Tuxbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. We discussed it last month, excuse me, last week, and brought it forward to the, to the members to review the updated document and share their, discuss it last week, bring their changes forward. I received edits from almost everybody, and I incorporated every member's edit into the final document with a couple of minor exceptions. And I think this builds a more positive-focused streamlined document for this committee. I'm happy to go through it, the different sections that we have, and either read it into the record, or talk about it briefly, what the different purposes are. I know everybody on this call has reviewed this document in depth, but the public hasn't really heard it. And then I have a few other comments to make about it in general, because I think it's, it's a, it's a time for us to, you know, move forward with this committee. So at the pleasure of the board, whatever the board would like me to do.
I don't think we need to review it, but just my opinion, maybe, do you want to share it, Ms. Wellman? Maybe share the doc. I know it's only a, a one or two pager, if you have it, and then we'll just go through the discussion.
I do have it, yep.
Okay.
Let me see if it's, there we go.
I'll pass you the power.
Oh, there we go. Okay. So the question is, are you seeing right here?
Perfect.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Right, so this is the Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Committee. These changes actually are updated from last weekend. So it's a little bit more recent than that, than nine. This is a typical format for the way that we do, whoops, excuse me. This is the typical format we use for boards and committees that we set up as subcommittees for the, for the Board of Selectmen. So we have, I'm jumping all over the place here, up to nine members with three town staff serving ex officio. We can get into that later. It's appointed by this board. The length of term would be three years. We haven't determined when we would do appointments, and the appointments have a chairperson, a vice chair, and a clerk is determined by that committee, and they'll meet and post their meetings in accordance with open meeting law. So this is the general purpose, and it's effectively to educate, advocate, and celebrate. So educate, organize awareness campaigns, trainings, discussion groups, and other learning opportunities. Advocate by sharing resources with Tuxbury Town employees, committee members, local business owners, faith, and nonprofit organizations, educators, and residents. And then celebrate the growing diversity of Tuxbury and desirability of being a resident of or doing business in the town, as well as recognizing those groups and individuals that have made a positive impact on diversity, equity, and inclusion within the town. This portion here, the charge to the committee from the Board of Selectmen, again, this is pro forma committee organization that we use here. And the language here is to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion, and build a stronger, more unified, welcoming town that respects and recognizes both its growing diversity and its commonalities, to nurture a community that promotes and encourages respect for all its residents, businesses, religions, town employees, nonprofit organizations, cultures, and guests, and to foster respectful, civil, reflective, public conversation. We have this portion here, this is where we had a lot of conversation last time, on how it will carry out its mission related to the, excuse me, the general purpose statements above. And we're talking here about public advocacy by promoting and encouraging understanding, acceptance, diversity, as well as recognition of those efforts in the community, sponsoring educational programs and partnering with other nonprofit, religious, municipal, and state organizations as needed, managing, developing, assisting various stakeholders in developing outreach and engagement campaigns. One, one item that was kept in or kind of adjusted was matters of a sensitive nature will be held in confidentiality and appropriate resources employed as needed, because there was some concern raised about that in their discussion. And then working with similar committees within other municipalities and organizations where there was a shared purpose, and using those kinds of materials that others have to help accomplish the mission. And then we have our criteria for membership, and it's a selectman or a designee, a school committee member or a designee if, if desired, the school superintendent or his designee, the town manager, and the police chief, again, with their designee, they would be ex officio. So they would attend, they would participate in discussion, engagement, and, and work on that, but they would not be voting members of the committee. And then we would have six members at large appointed by the board for three-year terms. It would be staggered initially. And then we would endeavor to appoint members that represent the diversity of our community, including but not limited to gender, race, age, sexual orientation, physical ability, culture, religion, and other differentiations. We'd also seek to have a student representative of high school age. And then these are other typical pro forma items. They have to be sworn in, they have to follow the conflict of interest law and the open meeting law and so forth, and then contracts. This is a typical boilerplate language that we have, that the committee cannot engage in a contract. There is no budget set aside for this committee. Town meeting would need to approve that, and the committee would need to bring forward a budget to the select board, and then town meeting, had they an interest in doing that. And then this document can be amended by this board at any time at a, at a meeting. So that's, I took you right through it anyway, and I'm open for questions or comments at this time.
All right, thank, well done, Ms. Wellman. All right, let's open up to the board. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So just to add a couple of comments, I do appreciate Ms. Wellman's listening to the feedback from the board members this past week, couple of weeks. I really like the name change. The document is short and simple, very clear, to understand. You know, I just pointing out that area that Ms. Wellman was talking about in section B on page two, it was good to see. Two main edits that I, that I like to see is, is, you know, item number four, matters of sensitive nature will be held in confidentiality, and appropriate resources will be employed as needed. It just has a better ring, a better, just a better message, I think, as well as the removal of the, it was actually section C, politically nonpartisan. I really appreciate that, Ms. Wellman, that, that was removed. And I just like the flow of it. I think it's a good idea. I support the document and the committee. So I just wanted to say thanks for taking initiative and making those changes. And all the board members conflict, comments, I think that was a great, a great working week. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brian Dick. How about, how about, how about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, he's trying to get that read off. I do want to just say I really appreciated everybody's comments, and the work that we did on this. I thought the conversation that we had at our last meeting led me to relook at the document in a way that I think was helpful for me as a committee member. And I want to, really want to thank you, everybody, for their openness. I really appreciate the flow of the document. I think it promotes that fostering of the equitable access that we're talking about, that we're trying to achieve with this committee. So I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the lead that Ms. Wellman took and everybody's work on it. I support the committee as it is redesigned. I think that while we've been talking about this since August, I think that it was time well spent, and I think we have a much cleaner document that can grow with us as we continue this work. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. How about Mr. Kratman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I still have the same concerns I had from the previous meetings. I would like to see this document put out to the residents and have a residence input on this. So far, it's just been the Board of Selectmen that have discussed this matter. I know we've gotten input from the police and different departments, but I would like to have seen the document put up on our town website, listening to different groups. I've said from the get-go, I, I, you know, when we're talking about diversity and, you know, human rights and things like this, this is a very sensitive subject. I have no idea of things that people have gone through. I don't have those experiences, and I don't have that knowledge that's out there. And I want to make sure that nobody is left out. That's, it's, it's a concern of mine. I want to see that, I would have liked to have seen public meetings on this, so that residents could have input. If community groups wanted to be out, if there's religious groups, if there's other groups, I have no idea who may be out there that wants to do. And if there's somebody that's left out, then I have some needs and concerns. And I want to make sure that we're talking about forming the group without the input. You know, we're forming how it's, how it's made up, who's going to be on it, and then it's like, and then we're going to select the people. I understand we do that for a number, number other, you know, groups that we form. But this is talking about personal rights and human dignity. I mean, everybody in this community should be treated with human dignity, love, and respect. And I want to make sure that people are treated that way. And I don't want to form something that I feel like somebody's being left out. And I have that concern. I just haven't had that input, and I would like to have that. And until I think that's taken in part of it, I just have a hard time wrapping my head around saying, I want to form a committee without hearing from everyone. So that's my input. I remain the same. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Kratman. I'm just going to echo the same comments. You know, the, the document has come a long way, I think. Don't quote me, it was a massive document. And now, you know, it's a very tight document, concise. I think we took a lot of the verbiage out. Absolutely for the committee and, and Ms. Wellman, like I shared, I just want to make sure that this committee, it needs to be apolitical. It truly needs to be, we need positive outcomes, positive outcomes, positive outcomes. You know, the last thing we want to do is, is have a committee that, that might have opinions or interests that are not in the interest of, of thirty thousand residents, as I like to say. But I'm, I'm all for it. I think like the Nike commercial, let's do it. It's time, let's just do it. You know, and I'm looking forward to you leading the committee. And like I said, positive results for the community. Let's get, let's, let's get the negativity out of, of the politics, so to speak, in, in any committee within our town. So I'm looking forward to positive outcomes. So with that, any other, any other comments? What is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman?
Please, Ms. Tronick.
I, I do just want to address Mark's concern, because I understand where he's coming from, and I thought that he made some great points at the last meeting. And I just, from my point of view, what I heard all of us say at the last meeting, that this committee, and I believe, I would like Ms. Wellman to maybe speak to this, but we believe that this committee is going, is, is, you know, going to do basically a listening tour and evolve as, so to Mark's point, I do think that there's room and opportunity for community inputs, and we have to get started with something. But we, as a Board of Selectmen, always have the ability to change and redefine, and I think that that's clear in the document. So I think that Mark's comments are somewhat embedded, and I just wanted to make sure that that is what my understanding is that's going to be happening.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, if I can add to that?
Please.
I have my comments I'd like to add. To Mark's comment about not leaving people out, I agree, we shouldn't leave anybody out. And I think the language in the document leaves room for the kind of diversity that we're seeing in the community, and as, and allows it to change and evolve as the community does. As leaders, we're in a position to take action, and we have the responsibility to speak for all of our constituents, including those that don't feel comfortable speaking out for themselves. We can look around our town and see the growing diversity as a demographic condition, but it has to be deeper than that. As leaders, we need to walk the walk of promoting tolerance and respect for longtime residents and new, while celebrating our change. Diversity is our strength. When inclusion is a core community value, we're telling our residents and our businesses that are here now, and those that are considering Tuxbury, that we aspire to be a community characterized by valuing and celebrating everyone. Additionally, we know that corporations and organizations do better with more women and minorities in the boardroom in the C-suite, that empowering diverse voices strengthens organizations, and that includes towns. We look at our largest employers here in Tuxbury and community groups, Raytheon, Thermo Fisher Scientific, Micronic, Community Teamwork, and even NIMCOG, have all adopted diversity and inclusion initiatives, and this is happening all around us. A D and I initiative will only enhance the richness and vibrancy of our growing community, and quite frankly, send a message to the many, many corporations that have social justice as a core value that Tuxbury is the right place for them. And that goes for new residents as well, and our current residents. So, you know, those are my comments on it. I think that it's something that we should go forward with. And as Ms. Tronick said, the intention of this committee, the first thing that would need to happen is we would be doing that listening tour, and having public meetings, and holding those opportunities for the residents to come forward and raise issues that they have, talk about what they think is important, what, what we need to emphasize in, in town, where their concerns are, and the things that they want to celebrate and recognize, because a lot of people doing really great things here. And then they would bring that back to the Board of Selectmen as part of their annual report process, which is, you know, apropos for all other committees. So those are my comments on this matter. I think that I'd like to see the board go forward and adopt this and open it, post the meeting organization on the town website, and advertise for members of the public to join the committee, to apply to be a member of the committee.
Any other further comments?
Form of a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Well, one, two seconds. Any other further comments? Mr. Kratman, are you, any further, further comments?
Yes, I mean, it goes to my concern, is we need to present this to the residents. That's my concern. Most, every other committee that I've been involved in, the residents have come to us and said, I would like this. We need this, and this is what I want. And I would like to listen to those groups. If somebody came to me and said, I want to do this, or we need to do that, or there was something that we, the residents are asking us to do. I've been elected by the residents to serve the residents in what they ask or I don't believe ever that government should be telling the residents, this is what you need, this is what you should have, and this is why we're creating it for you. I like to have the residents tell us that you are elected officials, this is what we're asking you to do, and that's why we elected you to, to these positions. Create something for us as we're asking. This is not something that's, I, I don't believe that we should be creating something and telling the residents this is what they need. I think the residents should be telling us what they need, and that's how we should be acting. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, you made your point. And I was, listen, we have discussions, so we can all have multiple viewpoints. That's why we have five members on the board. So I wasn't going to comment necessarily on Mr. Kratman's comments, because they're fair. We all have, like I said, five minds for a reason. My only thing is, you know, we did get several, 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 several letters in support of this. And at the end of the day, I, I think it is very open as far as the number of folks and the diversity across our town that will fill that. So again, I'm, and I don't, and remember too, it's all volunteers. Every one of these committees, folks volunteer to make Tuxbury bigger, better, faster, and this is no different. So again, I wasn't going to comment on my colleagues, but I just wanted to probably end the discussion here. And I know we have callers. We're not going to take callers now. We're going to take residents right after this. You know, that was the order of operation. So if the callers can just please hold tight, we'll get to you. In the meantime, any, any further discussion on this topic before I consider, the board considers a motion? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I know that Ms. Wellman made a motion. I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion and, and for the approval of the committee, the support of the committee, I have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Nay.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well, four one that carries. Okay, so now let's go back to, Brian, do we have some residents on, on, do we have some residents on?
We do, Mr. Chairman. And just to let anybody who wants to call know, we do only have one line. So if you get a busy signal, just wait until you hear the other person stop talking, then you can call in. But right now, we have Sheri Conrad on the phone.
Okay. And just, just name and address for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Sheri Conrad, in Metzheim Circle.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Well, I mean, I, I don't, didn't think my phone call was going to change anything. And not exactly that I'm against the committee, and I spoke to a couple of people today, but just that, like, you're average resident. I only heard about this today on the Tuxbury page, so I watched the video, and I was looking for some information, couldn't really find it. And so I had called a few people on your committee, but I just wanted to say, I just thought it would be a good idea to have maybe clergy on the committee, just because that's a big part of where we treat people. And I'm concerned, just as, you know, what's going on in the country right now, and the cancel culture and the climate, that that wouldn't happen to Tuxbury. Like, being canceled or called out, or, I don't know.
That's the opposite of what we want. Good call out, great call out. We talked about that.
Very political.
Okay, anything else? So future considerations, clergy, potential clergy man, clergy woman on the, okay. Okay, Cheryl, thank you very much. Anything else?
That's all. That's, that's the only concern I had.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. All right, Brian. Do we have another resident?
We do, Mr. Chairman. One second.
One of the days, we'll be back in Town Hall. One of these days. Can't come soon enough.
Although I think this is a great format. I think it makes it easier for folks to call in sometimes. So maybe want to keep it in the future. I don't know. Food for thought.
No, thank you.
But don't need to be back in Town Hall, though.
We'll debate, we'll debate that.
Mr. Chairman, we have Ann Sechter on the phone.
Okay, perfect. And just name and, name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Ann Sechter, thirteen South Elizabeth. I just wanted to say, as a lifelong Tuxbury resident, and a mother of a multiracial family, I see the utmost importance of this committee, and I'm excited that this would be a part of our town. It helps me feel like my family can be included into our, you know, in our town. You know, just a couple of points on, on specific selectmen, you know, speaking, they're worried about people.
No, and, 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 and I want to be careful. And, and I just want to be very careful. Let's be positive, and I just appreciate your comments towards the committee, not to anyone on the board, please.
Okay, so I want to address, but I just want to say, you know, I think that the point of this committee is not to leave people out, right? So we shouldn't be afraid of that. It's to celebrate everyone and not leave anybody out. One thing, one question I did have, maybe this, and I also want to say that I appreciate Ms. Wellman's perseverance on this committee. And I do have a question. Do you see, and maybe I missed it in previous conversations, but do you see us having activities in town?
Yes.
Cultural activities, or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Yes, I think there will be, part of the charge to the committee is to work on outreach and engagement, and, you know, activities or events would be part of that, for sure.
Okay. So I just, again, I just want to say that I appreciate this, and I, and I'm excited that this will hopefully be part of our town. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ann. Okay, very good. Brian, any other callers?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then we, I, we kept the residence section open for quite some time. So why don't we close the residence section down? And if a resident does happen to call, maybe we'll break the rules again. So at this time, why don't we move to, actually, at seven, we can bounce back up to schedule items here. I'm just going to share again the agenda. Oh, okay. Can you all see the agenda? Okay, perfect. All right, seven-twenty, we have scheduled items, National Grid Poll Petition for Fisk Street. This is an open, open meeting to the public. So do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a, I have a motion, a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Brian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Do we have a representative from National Grid?
That's me.
Name and, name for the record?
David Boucher, Senior Designer, National Grid, eleven-on-one Turnpike Street, North End over Mass.
Welcome, David. Thank you, per usual. Nice to see you again. All right, David, just very high level, want to describe what, what, what the petition's all about?
Yep. In our never-ending attempts to create more and better reliability for all the folks out there that get electricity from us, we'd like to place three devices on Fisk Street, and they need to be on three straight poles. It's a feed that comes over the river from Drakeet and runs down Fisk, and then into Tuxbury on Route one-thirty-three. The devices will regulate the voltage and make sure that the voltage is correct for everyone going beyond it, coming from the substation. So once again, they, they need to be in a, in a straight row. We have two existing, pole twenty and twenty-one. We're asking for one new pole.
We're asking for one new pole between them, approximately halfway between them, as shown on the diagram that we've provided. And because of the fact that pole twenty needs to be replaced, we're asking for it to move approximately eight feet north. And the reason for that is right now pole twenty is at the last three feet of the residence driveway at one fifty-seven Fisk. If we move it eight feet, it'll be five feet beyond where the driveway ends and make it a lot easier for that resident to get in and out of their driveway. So it's benefiting the customer slash resident right there for us to move it eight feet. That's, I believe that's the only reason why we're doing it. But the new pole, obviously it'd be new, pole twenty dash fifty, and the existing pole twenty-one, which you also see on the diagram, would be replaced. And then we put our three devices, one for each of the lines that are, the three phases that are at the top of the poles, to regulate the voltage of the electricity that we send down the road. So if the town sees fit and it okays this petition, it would allow us to have that new pole location and relocate the pole twenty approximately eight feet north. And if you have any questions, I could try to answer them.
Okay, sure. Well, let me open up to the board. How about, Mr. Brian Dick?
No other questions other than, I guess, moving that pole away from the entrance to the resident is a good thing. I just want to make sure that, I think you mentioned that, correct?
Yes.
So that, so that existing pole is on one side of the driveway, you're moving it across the driveway and then up eight feet?
Yeah, if, if the driveway, just imagine it's fifteen feet wide. The last three feet on the left side are blocked by the pole that exists there. So we're moving it just beyond that, about five feet past where the driveway ends. So it'll be five feet from the driveway, and once it's in the new position, and then we'll take telephone company, actually, we'll take the old pole way once everything's transferred to the new one. So it, you know, if it's a fifteen-foot wide driveway that they're only using up twelve feet of, now they'll be able to use fifteen feet of it.
And, and does that inconvenience the resident in any way on hookups or anything like that, or you coordinate that? Is there anything like that? No?
No, no, anything that's on that pole that, that drops to any of the houses, I'm not sure what it feeds, if anything, across the road. But that's, that shouldn't make any difference for the drops to the homes, the overhead drops for any of the facilities.
Sounds good. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. How about, Mr. Kratman?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I took a look at aerial view. I'm always concerned about if they're in a sidewalk area. There are no sidewalks along that area. It looks from what they're doing, they're moving away from the driveways to give a little better psych distance with people entering and exiting the driveways. So I think they've done their due diligence, and I appreciate that work. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. I'll just open up to the board. Then obviously we'll see if there's any butters on the line. But Ms. Stronach, Ms. Wellman, any comments?
No. Mr. Chairman, I concur. It would be a safety improvement for the folks using that driveway.
Yep, looks pretty straightforward. So with that being said, let me pause. Are there any, are there any direct butters on the phone, Brian?
We have no direct butters on the phone, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, let's do this then. Let's go ahead and I'll see your motion to close the public hearing. And if we get one for thirty seconds again, I think it's an improvement. It's absolutely an improvement for, I don't know, one direct butter. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Yep, Mr. Kratman, a second, okay. Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the National Grid poll petition, two nine eight five six nine six nine on Fisk Street.
Motion for a second? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. David, thank you very much, David, per usual. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
See you soon. All right, next order of business is, what do we have left here? We made a pretty good town manager review, town manager review. So with that being said, in no particular order, would anyone like to kick off? And again, this is per Mr. Montori's contract. Currently, he's in a three-year contract. And we're obligated to do Mr. Montori's review every year, and this is the date. So who would, who would like to go first?
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to jump out of the gate.
All right, Mr. Brian Dick, go for it.
So I've been working with our, our town manager for nine years as an elected official, six as school committee, three as a selectman. You know, I've always, I always see Richard in a, in a, in a great light. I, I enjoy working with him, and I believe he's, he's tremendous for the town. And I'll just go through a couple of quick things. Right out of the gate, this year was a very difficult year with the COVID, the pandemic, and I don't think our town manager and his team missed a beat at Town Hall, taking care of the town employees, whether it's DPW, fire, police, all that, and, and, and the employees at Town Hall. I think also the residents. He was out in front of everything that we needed there in a very difficult time. All the meetings were online, difficult, saved in gas, but I know he was always at, at the Town Hall doing meeting multiple, with multiple committees. He's always there early, stays late, attends multiple committee meetings every day. You know, he's, he's, when you think about our, our, our town manager, I think of a good communicator, meaning his open door policy, he's always there, has always been there for me. He provides weekly updates to the board. So a lot of this stuff that we talk about, you know, we, we do get a lot of information on, on a weekend, usually at halftime, at the halftime of the patch game. And it's chock full of, of information that we need to be updated on. And I think Richard's always out in front of that, so we're not sideswiped that, that week coming up. So his weekly updates, I mean, his COVID updates were great this year. Budgets, warrants, all that stuff, enterprise fund, budgets, things like that. I think, you know, he's got a good collaboration with our schools, our superintendent, very easy to work with, as well as our superintendent Malone, school committee, as well as the finance director, Mr. Dave Libby. You know, just finishing up, if you think about some of the things under his watch this year, maybe it dragged in a little end in two thousand nineteen, but you think about the fire station startup. These are a couple of highlights. I'm sure I'll miss a few. But you think about the, think about the things on his plate, fire, fire station startup, that's ongoing, school, the elementary school building startup, DPW funding plan, initial funding, initial plan. We hired, he hired a new fire chief, new police chief. That's always a very difficult thing in any given year, never mind two in one year. He helped secure new liquor licenses for growth, for Tewksbury, future Tewksbury growth. He's currently negotiating our four collective bargaining units, not to mention working with the schools on theirs. He's helping him, and this is, this is not just him, but it's his team, but he, he holds the pencil. He's the, he's the guy at the helm. So he, he answers when things falter. So when I say our town manager, it's really him and his team. But you think about the redesign plan for Pleasant Street and Main, which is one of the vital veins of, of, of Tewksbury. All that stuff is tremendous in, in one year, never mind multiple years. He's a planner, he's a doer, he's transparent, he's honest. I, I have, I, finishing up, I've, I've, I've seen him at two, where my Valley breakfast events, when we could go to him. And he stood out among, amongst all the other town managers. And I'm happy to work with him and, and him getting off the board, and it's been a tremendous ride with him. And I want to thank, thank him for his leadership in making my job easier. So that's what I have to say, Mr. Chair. I think we got a great one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brian Dick. How about, who'd like to go next?
I'll, I'll jump in.
Please, Ms. Stronach.
First of all, I know why Brian wanted to go first, and I don't want to sound repetitive. And as I have been working on this board and doing these evaluations, which we are required to do this annual review, and I do think it is important to our residents to know that while tonight, tonight, we as collectively as a board will be giving a lot of praise, I want everyone to know that I think every single member of this team has had private challenges with Mr. Montori that are always met with respect and with the, with the utmost forefront in his mind of us doing the right thing for our residents. And so I know for myself that when I go to Mr. Montori with a challenge that has either been presented to me by a resident or a concern that I might have, he has an extremely proactive approach, and it is evident every single time I bring something to his attention. And when he absorbs constructive criticism and he moves forward in a way that takes that and puts it into action and makes it a positive. And I never feel as if I can't go to him with a concern and, and think that it's not going to be addressed. And that is, for me, invaluable. When I say to a resident, I will take that to Richard and I will be able to get back to you. It always happens. And I appreciate that. And just in terms of what the review process entails, number one, we have to rate him on his managerial skills. And I think that Mr. Dick created a narrative that I'm not going to repeat, but his managerial skills are excellent, and he empowers his team to do the right thing. His budget preparation and the administration of the budget has just continued to blow me away that he improves that process every year. And I think about our town meeting and how that budget gets presented and the handouts and how the details get crisper every single time we go. And the work with, that he does with the finance committee, I, I just, you know, in the way that they work hand in hand to make that process is something that I appreciate. The third thing on the list is direct supervision of his department heads. We all know that Richard meets with his department heads weekly. He allows them to speak frankly and so that they all understand what each others have as challenges, so that they can come together as a group to resolve issues. And I think that that's one thing that I admire the most, is the teamwork that he has created within that group. And to the point that Mr. Dick brought up about two new department heads in welcoming them in a way that they're able to join that team and blossom as department heads. The fourth item on the list is organizational relationships. Again, I talk about the, those Sunday documents, this week's documents. We had so many documents to look at, he had to send it in two emails. They're very detailed, but at the same time, they are incredibly concise and drills down to what we really need to know to make decisions. And I certainly appreciate that. I talked about the town meeting and the preparation for that. And then the last, there's two other areas. One is communication and handling of public information in the relationships with the public. Oftentimes I hear residents say that they do not believe that Richard is forward-facing enough. But what I have come to learn and come to appreciate is while he may not be as forward-facing as some other town officials, like our police chief, like our fire chief, like our superintendent, Richard is working night and day on behalf of our residents and really makes strides to that. So while he may not be as forward-facing in attending events, the work going on behind the scenes to make those events and, and things occur is second to none, in my opinion. And then the last thing that we have to rate him on is his personal qualities. His personal qualities and the work ethic that Richard has, and the integrity that he brings to his position is the thing that, I mean, we're supposed to rate these on a scale to one to five. I don't think five is, rates high enough in terms of his work ethic and the integrity that he brings to the table. And it's something that I appreciate in seeing what other communities are struggling with in terms of handling of personnel issues. They're always handled with the utmost dignity. And, you know, I just really appreciate that quality that we have in our town manager, because I think that it sets the tone for what we do as a town, and I appreciate that. So that's all I have to add, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Stronach. All right, how about, how about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our, my colleagues have done a great job summarizing most of my comments regarding Mr. Montori. I opened up my document that I wrote last year for his review, which we did in April, in no small part because of the initiation of our, of the COVID crisis. And when I began writing my comments last year, it was in February. And it was about this time that my daughter came back from Italy, and we found out later had been on a flight with a presumptive positive person. It didn't turn into anything locally, but there was no testing in February last year that you could get. There was no anything last year. And so the world has really changed, and, and this environment is pretty hard to govern in any way for lots of folks. So his ability to pivot to everything that has come up in this year, while also maintaining the town's regular work from budgets, collective bargaining, and so forth, already mentioned, shows that this town can walk and chew gum at the same time and do it well. He works closely with staff. He has been since I think May or June or whenever it was, to open our schools safely. And that process, they're continuing to meet often to, to work collaboratively for the benefit of our student learners. His hiring process for police and fire chiefs were open, inclusive, and professional. His collaborative nature and his open door policy have benefited everybody in this community, along with his willingness to pursue public-private partnerships to obtain testing and now vaccinations for, for staff and then also for the public. He has worked, we've all shared our frustrations regarding the pandemic with information, testing, vaccinations in this area. I've expressed plenty of frustration to our, to our delegation. I've called the state multiple times. And he has worked very hard to provide stability in an unprecedented environment. And, you know, that's not easy to do. He's put our town employees first as well, and implementing changes to our buildings, obtaining PPO and stuff like PPP and testing for our staff and ensuring that our staff is ready to serve the community well. So particularly to speak to his kind of always-on presence, he, he is always available to the Board of Selectmen. And I have asked him questions, you know, on the weekend, at night after work, from constituents, the questions that I get, and he answers as quickly as he can, or he gets more information as needed. And that reliability and that open door make a huge difference to the constituents I serve and to the community at large. So I'm, that, that's, those are the summations of my comments, but I want to thank him for his service during, you know, really unprecedented time and for his leadership and his stewardship of our staff. Thank you.
Done, Ms. Wellman. How about, Mr. Kratman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, we, you know, we discuss about, you know, how we can do better in this community, what we can, how we can serve our residents better, and what we need to do. We always have the same number We always have the same number of concerns, taxes, sidewalks, water and sewer bills, all those different things, and we put that in the budget every year. But Richard takes all of those into consideration and puts together the smartest, well-put-together budget each year. We always plan for the worst and hope for the best. And that, that mindset of his has put us in a good position in the town. You know, we always say the rainy day fund and what's going to be happening. Well, this year, we had a real crisis that opened up. And without skipping a beat, he continued moving forward. When we needed additional nurses for tracking or if we needed any kind of other services or how to shift the departments around and keep part-time so that some crews were working and some crews weren't working with the police department and make sure that not everybody was on at the same time, fire department, how to service people, making sure everybody had the right protective gear, a million different things that you would, you take for granted, but he was right on key with every single one of them. When, when you really need a leader, he stands up. And he's a great leader. I'm very, very happy that we have him as our town manager. And I think we're all very lucky. The services that he provides, I don't think a day goes by where I'll be talking to him maybe once or twice on some matter, and especially during this year. I've never received so many calls from people needing help. You know, one, one way or another, they all need help in, in some matter. And every time I say, I'll talk with the town manager, and that's where I begin. Because we go through the top and we go through the departments and I give it to him and he'll talk to his section heads and his department heads. It'll get me an answer and I can relay to the residents and work with them to give them the answers. And he never says, I'm too busy or I'm, I have too much to do. It's always, I'll make time, I'll get the right answers for you. That's, he, he's always willing to work. And I don't know how many times I've talked to him on a Friday night when he's going home and he tells me, I'll be around all weekend. Give me a call. Don't worry about it. He'll take a call in the weekend. He'll take calls at nights. He'll think, if there's a snowstorm, if there's an emergency, if there was a fire, if something happens, you know, we got a power, the water main break, something that's going on, he's there. He knows what's going on in this community. And he's always planning and giving people the resources to try to deal with those problems. And that's what a leader does. And I think we're very lucky. I'm just going to simplify. We are very lucky to have this man as our leader. And I'm very happy that we, I want him to continue and I'm very proud of him. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kratman. All right, let me say a few words. I always tread not the waste words. First off, error correction, Mr. Brian Dick, you missed the dispatch center too. He was, that was on his plate as well. That was a big one. And, I mean, where do I start? To Mark's point, I used to call him, my saying is he's the Bill Belichick of town managers. I'm not too sure that's a good thing now that Brady's moved on, but I think, I think everyone understands my point there. As far as the budget, that's where, you know, listen, that's where it, it sometimes it matters most. Extremely impressed with all the budget, how he lays the budget out. To everyone said it, line item by line item, I can question everything right down to the penny. I'm still learning after four years, very complex, super complex. You learn something every time you, you jump into the budget. But Mr. Montori, I'll only uncork the champagne when we have zero percent raises in taxes. So as much as you get an A++, there's always that little room, you know, for additional plus here when we can get everything leveled up. But I know you're working at it. And especially around water and sewer, tremendous strides in the last four years for almost zero increases across the board and, and a little bit of decrease. But again, until we don't pay bills, there's always work to be done. But I'm just so impressed with the way you handle the budget and, and the way you present it to us in, in town meeting. Organization and planning, I think that's one of the keys to your success. Your level of organization is second to none. I can ask, oftentimes I talk to Richard more than my wife, that, maybe that's an exaggeration, but I think we all said it, he's always on, we're always talking to you. When whatever information I need, from A to Z, I send an email, I pick up the phone, I'm getting something within five minutes. It's just truly incredible, your speed that you can deliver. And I give credit to your level of organization. It's, it's impeccable. As far as your supervision, listen, you run a tight ship. You know, that's your style. It's always going to be your style. And I always say it always starts at the top. And I think that's very commendable and, and I think that reflects all the department heads in town, which is a wonderful thing. Kind of everyone beats to the same drum. And like I said, it, it all starts at the tippity top. As far as community relations, that's where I differ a little bit from maybe some of the board. I, I kind of like you behind the curtain, Mr. Montori. I mean that in a very good way. Meaning, you know, we're, we're supposed to be out there. We want to be out there. You know, we're residents as much as we're select men or select women. So I like you behind the curtain, so I don't take umbrage to that. We want to be out there. We should be out there with our residents and our neighbors. So that's always, I don't hit you, I don't hit you too hard there. And as far as personal qualities, listen, everyone summed it up. Your level of integrity is second to none. Your level of professionalism, it's, it's, it's commendable. And again, I don't want to kind of repeat what everyone said on the board. So very, very happy to have you. And just for the town, we are going through negotiations now with all the different unions. So as far as Mr. Montori's compensation, because we're supposed to do the review and talk about compensation, but we're going to cover that piece in a little bit because we're still in, in negotiation modes with, with many of the unions. So with that being said, Mr. Montori, I know you're a very humble, humble type of guy, but I'll open it up to you for, for, for comments.
So first of all, thank you very much to each and every one of you. Those words mean a lot. You know, the success we have had since I've been here as town manager for the past year. I could not have done any of it without your support, so I very much appreciate that. We obviously have much more to do and I look forward to taking on the challenges that face us and working with each of you because I think we have an excellent team. We work well together and, you know, I look forward to many more years of success. The one thing I do want to say is, as has been mentioned, this has been a very challenging year. And I don't think I could be more proud of the department heads that serve this community, the employees that work for this community and the public officials who serve this community. And what we have done in the last year, what we've accomplished, what we've been through, closer, working together, facing challenges together. I don't think there's a community in this Commonwealth that has done what we have done. And I'm very proud of everyone, everyone that's involved in this community for how we've done since the pandemic started. And getting through this is still a long way to go. Confident that we will face all the challenges like we have in the past 10 months. Based on what we've done in the past 10 months, there is nothing we can't do. So again, I'm just very proud of the people that work and serve this community and I'm, I'm proud to be part of it. So I thank you as a board for allowing me, allowing me to be part of it. And I appreciate everything you have done for me, both personally and professionally. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montori. Well, what a better segue, Mr. Montori. It's Town Manager section. And I know it's not on the agenda, but I know, you know, listen, the COVID vaccination stuff is a very hot topic. We're all trying to do what we can at a local level. So if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Montori, maybe just update the residents and community because we had a big shift of plans la, last week per the governor. So if you wouldn't mind, maybe touch upon the COVID vaccinations and then we'll go into, we'll clean up some of the stuff as far as the invoices.
Sure. So vaccine, vaccine distribution has been a hot topic, obviously, in the entire Commonwealth. When the first phase was rolled out in regard to public safety and first responders, we took that in a regional approach with the town of Chelmsford, Drakehead, Westfield, Bill Ricker, I believe, and Tingsborough. And we had our first responders vaccinated through that group along with Lowell General handled some of the vaccinations for our first responders. That went very well. We had no issues. Everyone had their first and second dose. And then when the second phase started for residents and seniors over 75 years of age, we applied for 4,000 doses immediately. And we were not approved. The state changed initially after opening up Phase Two to only allow 100 doses per week, per community. So we continued to apply for those allotments, but we never received any. We applied not only for 100 per week. There were weeks that we applied for 250, 300. As of today, we applied for another 300. But we as a community have never received an allotment of vaccine, which was discouraging for us because we had plans in place to run a clinic out of the senior center. The governor last week sent out new guidelines that stated that communities would not receive any more allotments after March 1st. They would get their allotments for their second doses, but no new allotments would be given out. Everything would be operated through the mass vaccination sites. The town of Tewksbury, the closest one is Lowell General. And Lowell General has run a very good operation. They've been very good to the town in regard to setting aside appointments, blocking off appointments so we could provide transportation. And it's worked well, well for us so far, but it's still not a local site for residents who don't want to travel outside the community. It was interesting, as I was preparing to update the board regarding vaccines today, we received information that Merrimack Valley Health Services may be holding a clinic in town. And they may be providing up to 300 doses, not just for Tewksbury, but for Merrimack Valley Council on Aging Senior Centers. We're still working out those details, but we may in fact have an opportunity to have a clinic within the community. So every day this changes. We keep trying to receive a local area for vaccines, but nothing has been approved yet. I know there's frustration within the community regarding that, but we have tried. We'll continue to try. We'll continue to see if we can get a regional site through the state that's easier for residents to get to. But a lot of it, a lot of it is out of our hands. The delegation, the state senators, state reps have been involved in trying to help. Representative Robinson is trying to get a regional site at Trinas for several communities. I know the delegation has sent letters to the governor on behalf of the local communities. So this thing continues to evolve. But right now, we have not received any vaccine to provide a local clinic. But we're not going to give up and we'll continue to try.
Thank you, Mr. Montori.
In regard to a couple of other things I have, we have a senior town council invoice, two invoices that need to be paid. First is for November 2020 in the amount of $4,401.50 and I would recommend approval.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brian Dick. Roll call though, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
Also have a senior town council invoice for the month of December in the amount of $7,396.50 and I would recommend approval.
So move.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion in a second by Ms. Stronach. Roll call though, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
And then finally, a town council invoice for January 16th through January 31st in the amount of $2,167.50. I'd recommend approval.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Any additional business, Mr. Montori?
That is all I have. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any minutes, so let's jump into board member reports. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of things. The General Bylaw Committee is going to get off the ground. We're aiming for Thursday, March 11th. I'm just waiting for one more person to say that it's okay. And then we'll go ahead and schedule that so that work is going to get started. I want to give the board a report on NIMCOG. The Route 38 project is, is on the topic. It was on our topic. It's on our topic every week when we're talking about the tip, but excuse me, every month. Right now, the readiness date for advertising the project is in September, September 21st. And the project is at 75% design. One of the primary reasons it's at 75% design at this point is some right-of-way issues that remain along the corridor. I talked, during our meeting last week, I asked if we can push the design to be finished so we can, we can advertise it sooner because it would be really great to get this project going sooner and, you know, not, not waiting till next spring basically to break ground, which is what the timeline is right now. That's not likely in all the discussions that we've had. So the three right-of-way issues I went over with our town engineer the other day are along the southeast quarter of Pleasant Street, one along Main Street near 1176, and then there's another section across from the library. The impacts are de minimis effectively for these issues, but they still have to be managed. So because when the project went from 25% to 75% design, it increased a little over $2 million. This is interesting because there's another project in Dunstable on Main Street that is at 100% design and it's currently scheduled for the FY21 tip. It has also increased in, in cost. And as a result, were both things to go forward on the FY21 tip, there would not be enough funding as it stands right now to fund both projects fully in scope. So that's some of a concern. However, the Dunstable project remains at high risk for being moved to the FY22. And part of that is due to some right-of-way issues they're having. And they're also having some environmental submissions that they need to take care of. So their design is at 100%, but they're probably going to slip for these reasons. So that's less of a concern on the budget standpoint right now. The project engineer I'm in touch with, I have emailed him as well. And then Justin Howard from NIMCOG and I have extensively talked. And he's not concerned at this point that there's going to be a deficit with this project that is going to impact our scope. So that's what I have.
Maybe just for the residents, are you referring to, because this is a big one. We hear enough about 38. It's just, it's still a nightmare. So we talking about, I think it's 1.8, 1.8 miles. Is that from Old Boston Road to Colonial Drive for 38?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the big Main Street project. Yep. That's correct. That's it. Go ahead.
Now open a smile on residents' faces because Route 38 is a mess. So just to help residents understand that, we put it on a tip. It's a five-year plan and we're almost at that five years to finally execute and, and get a nice section paved. So it was a schedule for 2022 construction?
It's, the funding comes out of the FY21 tip, okay? It will, we're going to advertise it in September. We'll do the whole RFP process and, you know, open the bids and all of that. Not RFP, but anyway, moving along. It takes a long time through the winter to sign the contractors, et cetera. And they'll start working on it in the spring of FY22. So
Can't come soon enough.
No, it can't. It's actually, it's, it's my number one priority when it comes to NIMCOG is making sure that this project happens on the schedule it's on now and not letting it slip in any way. Trying to push them a little bit to see if we can get it going further, but that doesn't seem to be possible. But there's a conversation tomorrow and we'll be having, I'll express that same interest tomorrow as well.
Thank you. I didn't mean to jump in, but just a important note, the, you know, 38 improvements.
To be, yeah.
Any, any questions from the board? Because that's, I know that's a big ticket item here. Working with NIMCOG to make sure we push that through for 2022. Any questions, comments from the board? Any questions, comments from the board? Okay. And if we need any help, I guess, you know, from our delegation, please let us know, Ms. Wellman. You know, whatever we can do to help you, help us push that through, just do let us know. That's all.
Oh, I will.
All right. Very good. Anything else on your side?
I had one other thing, Mr. Chairman. Fun thing, fun thing, the Friends of the Tewksbury Public Library are making a cookbook. And they are looking for submissions to the cookbook. So if you go, residents, go to Friends, TP Friends, Tewksbury Public, tplibrary.org/cookbook. They can find the submission form. All of the recipes need to be submitted by March 15th. I am going to give my legendary pumpkin cheesecake recipe because I know everybody loves pumpkins. It's good in the fall. You don't want to have it in the spring. But anyway, I, I know they're looking, they're going to have some great local hits that are famous around these parks. And they're looking for submissions from everybody in town. So go ahead and do that. And with that, I want to thank my colleagues for our progress tonight and the collaborative, inclusive, open discussion and the, the nature in which we've conducted this work. For the last few weeks, it's really been a pleasure to work with this board. So thank you very much.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Wellman. How about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. So I'm going to jump on NIMCOG as well in a little bit different venue. As I mentioned to you at our last meeting, the Local Housing Partnership Committee is looking to do some work in NIMCOG. We received a grant from NIMCOG to help us with that work in terms of looking at our affordable housing and looking at potential lots within the community. It is a good first step to some of the work that we want to get done. We may need to augment those services, as I talked to you before, in terms of the consulting work that needs to be done for that project under the Local Housing Partnership. But I think that this is a great first step. I want to thank the town manager and Steve Sadwick and his team for the quick turnaround on that piece of the project. So I know that the Housing Committee would like to have had more input, but sometimes when these things come up with NIMCOG, it's very quick timing. And I think they turned it around in four days. So just want to mention that. The Events Committee met on February 11th. And I want you to know that they are working very hard to find a way to do an event in the fall. It won't be as big as the Fall Festival, but kind of piggybacking on the success of the community farmers market that we had last spring and maybe do something in that venue. So they're working really hard to try to reengage in that work now that things are a little bit in a place where we can mitigate better in terms of what's going on with COVID. So a lot of excitement on that committee that we're actually going to be able to maybe do something. Won't be till the fall. And then the Elementary Building Committee also met on February 11th. Our next meeting of that committee will be on March 11th. And if it would be okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I would love it if that committee could come in and do a presentation to this board in a future meeting. I'm not sure if the project manager or the committee would be ready, but I would like to bring that up at our March 11th meeting and get us on the agenda to bring that project to you all on the board and kind of show the residents what's happening on that project. I think that would be pretty exciting if that would be okay with you.
Absolutely.
And then Ms. Wellman talked about the library. I think that it's important to note that the library is moving and grooving and they are going to be extending their hours in the evening on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, starting in March. Do I have that right, Mr. Montori?
Yes, you do.
Till 8:00 PM. So another great sign of progress in the work that's going into safely reopening and those mitigations to COVID. And then the last thing I want to mention, which I forgot to mention when I was talking about the Local Housing Partnership, is the Soldier Ron Project that is going to be working with the Tewksbury Habitat Build at Main Street. And really excited about that project to bring in some affordable veteran housing in that. And I want to thank everybody who's working on that. You all got that information in your packet, but it's nice to see that. And Tewksbury Habitat Build is a great partner to work with in terms of affordable housing. So I want to thank them for their efforts. And with that said, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else. Thank you so much. Oh, wait, wait. I lied. I got one more thing.
I forgive you. Proceed.
Okay. I do want everyone to know that we are still in the process of finding Clark. So I know that we're a little bit late in the minutes. So I will, we're working on that. Mr. Montori will hopefully be meeting with somebody. So we will be catching up on those soon. But I am aware that we're a little bit behind and I beg the residents' patience in that venue. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Not much to add, but just a question, maybe a future agenda item to, through you, to Mr. Montori. I had a local business restaurant ask me about outdoor permitting. I know it's still a lot of snow out there, but just trying to get ahead of it for this committee. I don't know where we left that. I don't know if that expired like on December 31st on what we did. Is that something we want to talk about in a future agenda item?
Yeah, let me get some updated information on the most recent guidelines and I can present it to the board. We're going to meet next week as a special meeting on water and sewer rates, but I can have the information that night for you.
Okay, sounds good. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brenda. How about, Mr. Kratman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic Development is scheduled to meet next Wednesday. We continue to work to try to find ways to help small businesses, discuss ways that we can promote them and continue to listen to them as we move forward, working together to try to get some mapping going on to highlight some of the communities. Best, and we're promoting the shop local businesses. And I'd like to keep that going and out through the community during these most difficult times. Please support your local businesses. This is when it really matters. Those are the local businesses that support your sports teams, your kids, gives everybody jobs. Support them while we have these difficult times. I have LRTA meeting scheduled for Thursday and that's all I have for this week right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman. As far as the Tewksbury Reuse Committee for the Trahan in North Street, I'll save my updates till next meeting. I'm hopefully have a nice little PowerPoint that we can share as a draft to see what we're doing for that committee. And the only other thing I have is 46 degrees tomorrow. There is light at the end of the tunnel, 46. So with that being said, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Brian, the last roll call vote tonight. Mr. Brian Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.